All right, good evening. Oh, yes. We adjourn from our committee of the whole?
Certainly.
To adjourn, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight for our council meeting. Go ahead and call the council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Sue Grodick?
Here.
Ron Van Kirk?
Here.
Meg Ryan Chackey?
Here.
Andy Selhertz?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Aaron Barowski?
Here.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn over to Meg Ryan Chackey for our opening.
As we've had a lot of discussion around the opioid settlement, I do want to have tonight's moment of silence go to the people who have lost their lives and those who are still with us who have lost a loved one and been impacted by the opioid crisis. So if we could just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chackey. First item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from our meeting date April 25th. Are there any comments or questions regarding that?
Motion approved.
Certainly.
To approve the minutes, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
All right, we do have some guests that are here with us tonight from the county public works department. Mr. Ray, Dave Ray is here as well as Laura, is it Weber? Weber. Ah, it was. She's only, it was Weber. I said it spelled Weaver. I'm sorry about that. Laura Weber is here. And so they're here to make some comments regarding that. So Laura, do you want to take over, or Dave, whoever it is at this time?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for having us out here. It's been a while since we've actually given a presentation due to the COVID and everything else that's been dealing with everywhere, but we're glad to come back. Whenever you guys ask us for any type of information. Tonight, we are with Laura Weber. She's our new chief engineer who took over for Hugh Blossage in the engineering department. And Dave Ray is our new county engineer who also took over for Dave Marquardt. So we have two new people with us this year. We're happy to have a board. And you'll find out that our services have been going real strong even through the last couple of years. And I think we've done some good things in your city. So Laura's going to do the presentation afterwards. If there's any questions or comments, we'll be happy to help you get through those answers.
Thank you.
All right.
Again, thank you for having us. I did make a handout for you guys to share. It's just the presentation of what, yeah, Brian's going to help pass those out. It's just the summary of your annual report that you guys get every year. There is a copy of, I believe, the annual report in there as well. Thank you. And those are the highlights of what I'm going to be going over for you guys. And again, thank you for having us. It's a pleasure serving the city of Brooklyn. The sanitary engineering department, as you know, we are a full-service customer with the county. And that means we provide you with full, I know, I'm short, so, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It's a pleasure serving the city of Brooklyn. The sanitary engineering department provides full service. We have a full service agreement. And in this presentation, you can look through it later, but it summarizes all of our maintenance services that we provide to the city throughout the years. We summarize everything in the annual report and the totals we go through with you. And those are in the appendices in the annual report. But I was going to highlight specifically some of the services. We develop the mainline sewer cleaning program. We do digital video inspection, and that's called CCTV. It's the closed-circuit TV inspection of the sewer lines. And we analyze the videos for deficiencies and defects and determine if anything would be needing rehab or repaired. There's smoke and dye testing, and that goes along with the illicit discharge detection elimination program. And we also do dye testing when residents may require it. Construction and engineering services are included. We do lateral and mainline sewer repairs with that as well. Lateral cleaning from the main line up to the test tee, which is also the cleanup. And we have a 24/7 on-call service. We have a dispatch center. And that is utilized by the residents if they should have a backup in their home or if they have something in the middle of the night and they can call dispatch for that. Our lateral services are from the mainline sewer up to the lateral or the cleanup, and that's the test tee. And there's a little diagram in there that you can reference that. I did go over the 24/7, and I did summarize how many call-outs we've had this year, too. We do also offer administrative services, which in the engineering section and with Brian's assistance, we manage that for the city. That's the GIS. That would be, the licensing and permits are all through the county. We have a finance that's Ed Preman. He manages the finances. And he helps project costs out for the upcoming year and the work projections and the sewer funds. And he helps us balance that. Capital improvement planning, if the city were to have a larger project and they were to contact engineering, we would work with you. If you had a consultant that you wanted any help with or review on, we would help you with that service as well. And again, as a full-service program, we manage and help you do the operation and maintenance of your sewer, both sanitary and storm. And there are 4,000 parcels in the city that are on sewer right now. The average frontage is 68 feet. And the total community frontage on sewers around 271,000 feet. And I did an assessment comparison of surrounding cities. And the city of Brooklyn is around average. You're right in the middle, so that's a good sign. And I did a comparison on the bar chart here with the surrounding cities. And I also did an assessment revenue projection from 2021. And so that was how 2021 ended. And that's also, I think that was provided in your annual report. And the city ended the year in a good, the sewer fund were in good balance, good standing. So in 2021, the maintenance summary, there were 256 house calls by maintenance. The jetting, the total footage was sanitary and storm, was over 142,000 feet of sewer was jetted. For the mainline television, the main line is the main sewer line, so not the laterals. We did over 108,000 feet of mainline televising. Catch basins, or your storm catch basins, over 79 were cleaned in 2021. And the footage of lateral inspections, and that's from the main line up to the test tee, but it can also be if a resident has a specific request and we have to assist them. That was over 5,600 feet of lateral was inspected. And for engineering and construction, we do offer construction inspection on all of your projects that should go in if it's a repair or a rehab. We did 63 jobs for the city in 2021. Construction permits issued were 21. And I did summarize the program expenses. And in 2021, the total program expenses were over $900,000. And we had, you guys had four capital projects in 2021. And that was the Bedoff Road Repair, North Cliff Avenue Repair. There was a sewer repair loan and the Traymore Avenue Repair. So the county has a sewer repair contract that we run and we operate and we manage that. And if any repairs use anything with that sewer repair loan, that would be summarized in that section whenever you need that. And the 2022 illicit discharge detection elimination program, I know we work closely with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. And I know they have over 36, I believe, sites in the city of Brooklyn that they manage. And they place on their list of potential watch areas, and if it's on their top 50. And I believe they just recently said that there was one that they had, and they were considering if it made the top 50, and they said that it did not. But we keep an eye on that, and we are always engaging with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. We have meetings with them to review those. So for 2022, the priorities of the department are maintenance, cleaning, televising, and maintaining the capacity of your system to meet Ohio EPA requirements for capacity, operation, and management of your system. The illicit discharge mitigation coordination with the sewer district and the board health. The repairs and rehabs, and that would be sinkholes in the streets, loss of service provided to your residents. Plan reviews for inspection permits and mainline sewer televising. So again, Brian Hitch is our deputy director, deputy chief for maintenance. I took over for Hugh Blossage just at the end of last year. So I am the chief section engineer for sanitary. So we have around five area engineers that work under me. We work closely with maintenance. We're always working with them. Our contact information is included on here in addition to the dispatch information. And that is the emergency line. And if anyone ever has a question with service to their home, any of your residents, that dispatch line is available to them. And that's included in our annual report as well. And if you guys have any questions on finance, at the back of the annual report is information for all of our contact, and that includes Ed Preman as well. And he will summarize that. Or you, sorry. Do you have any questions? For the residents' sake, so the 216-443-8201 is if they have an issue. If they have an issue at their home, correct? Or if they see something? What's the emergency line? That's the same one. It's a, okay. It's a 24/7 line, yeah. I just wanted to make sure. So again, that's 216-443-8201. And then for the email address, do you recommend that they use that email address? Is that just for internal purposes? Not for emergencies?
This is emergency. We want you to call the number and staff 24/7. Now, we have a second shift on every night, Monday through Friday, until 11:30 at night. However, if someone comes up between the hours of 11:30 and 6:00 AM, we will mobilize and throw a signal. We see water in the basement. Or if there's black catch basin on the street, we're probably going to be teaming emergency and handling the other things. So we're, you know, like the science chief, we have some of our staff. So we've always been able to respond within two hours of a call coming. How it works is if you call the emergency company, it's a call center. It will be notified by supervisor on the call. They'll call the rest of the bag. They'll assess the situation. Wait till the next day or this amount of time.
Thank you. Anyone in council have any additional questions for Laura?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Actually, after the last council meeting, when I was on my way home, one of your crews was out cleaning the catch basins on my street, and I stopped and chatted with them. And very polite, we had a nice chat. And I will tell you, it was completely amazing at how much debris was being sucked out of the catch basins. I mean, you could hear it rattling as it was going through the hose. It was unbelievable.
Yeah, that's good to hear. You always get to hear that.
They were on my street a couple of weeks ago as well. My son, he's three, thoroughly enjoyed watching them do it. It was dark out when they were doing it.
Yeah, the jet trucks are pretty interesting.
Yeah, and they were pulling, I mean, she had a little thing. She was reaching there pulling bricks and stuff out of there. It was crazy.
Yeah, you'd be amazed with the storm catch basins.
That's good. Thank you so much for the information. I appreciate it, Laura.
I have one more question. So we've had two phone calls on this. If it was just one, I wouldn't ask. But when you guys sucked out the catch basins, there's been two instances where people have called. See, I think you took one of the phone calls the other day on Elizabeth Lane, where the water came up the person's sink. Now, is that just random? Or is, would there be any connection to your work on the street and the water coming? Up their sink? Yeah, yeah, the sink drain, yes.
Like the sink in the basement?
In the basement or in the kitchen sink?
I didn't take that.
Oh, okay.
There have been times when we've jetted a sewer. It's a high-pressure jet. Sometimes it's a bad pressure. We'll go into someone's house. But usually if that happens, the house is not trapped properly. You can protect it from that.
Okay.
So it's usually an internal problem. If it happens, we'll go out. We've had, you know, quite clean services before.
Okay.
And we've jetted at 1,000 feet. If you heard one phone call or two, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I mean, because, like I said, a lot of the houses may not be trapped. That's a real habit sometimes.
Okay, that's good to know.
And then what we do, we like to get those calls. And we red-flight that.
We send them to you, so I know that.
Yeah, we red-flight that. So the next time we're out on that street, we'll try to find a little bunter over the more handles down the street or something. We'll do something, but maybe not put as much pressure also to make sure that we go through that again. So anytime there is a complaint, we definitely judge it perfectly in our records.
Okay. Yeah, and dispatch keeps excellent records. I know in engineering, when we've had to look up for repairs or anything, if we need history on a segment, we just contact dispatch, and they keep records of all of that. So any calls that come in, they document that. So if there's ever any questions, if you had, you know, reach out to any of us, and we can look that information up directly, too.
You're good. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want, but you're welcome. People feel awkward walking out, but you're more than welcome to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Hi, I'm John Vishnowskis. I was trying to remember with Mary Jo, if it was 10 years ago or more, that I came and spoke to council about All Fates Pantry, which for more than 15 years has delivered groceries as a partnership, a partner of the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, to 60-plus seniors and low-mobility people. All Fates Pantry does 100 square miles, but that includes the city of Brooklyn. So that was the only food bank agency servicing Brooklyn directly. Until a few years ago, we started doing business as Baba's Yard. And we had a few locations doing fresh produce distributions. We started out in Veterans Park. We went across to the rec center. And we finally found a home over at St. Elias. So in three seasons, we gave away 200 tons of produce. So it was really an impact. And I'm just really here to thank the city for their partnership with us and especially to thank the three council people that did some heavy lifting. Meg, Andy, and last year, Aaron started coming and doing that heavy lift. We get five tons of produce. So it's a bit of work. And I just wanted you to know that Father George at St. Elias and his wife Pam are taking over leadership of the program, and it is going to continue. We started last month. We could use a few more volunteers, or as we like to say, there are volunteer opportunities. If you know folks who are looking for those. Little kids aren't appropriate, but teenagers certainly are. And it's a really excellent community building event. I'm sure the council people would be willing to back me up on that. And I just wanted to invite you to, again, continue to support the program there at St. Elias. And I just wanted to thank you once more for being a good partner through the years.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can you share the time, the timeframe?
The program at St. Elias is on fourth Tuesdays. And that's from 3:30 until 5 o'clock. There's no residency requirement, though a majority of the clients do come from the 44144. You get a lot of clients from 109 as well. But that goes from April through October. All Fates Pantry delivers year-round, once a month. The same volunteers deliver to the same clients. So they really build up a personal relationship, which really is invaluable as well. So if I may, I'll give Mary Jo a couple of cards, one for Baba's Yard. If you have anything that I could be of service regarding. And one for All Fates Pantry, where you could call directly, or your, or potential clients could call directly to see if they'd qualify.
Thank you very much for your work in our city.
It's my pleasure.
Rob Slattery, 660 Zerby Cyrus Drive. I'm going to read a statement that was just released about an hour ago by the Association of Brooklyn Firefighters Union Local 1145. "A small group of residents have been beating this drum about staffing the safety forces for several years." Now you can hear it in the words of the firefighters. "Recently, the mayor made some comments at the March 28th council meeting that we feel could use some clarification." But first, some history. Prior to 2001, the department was staffed with 30 EMS and suppression personnel, a chief, a 40-hour fire prevention officer, and an administrative assistant. This was the staffing level that the city and the residents felt was appropriate for our city. "We were proudly able to send 10 people to the World Training Center and still have our now-current roster available." Now there would be half the department. "As financial situations changed, so did the composition of the department." "We began losing staffing through attrition and made contractual concessions to assist the finances of the city, including foregoing an already-negotiated raise in holiday." "Fast forward to today, and you now have 21 EMS slash suppression personnel and a chief." "All of this while the call volume has increased steadily." "Did the need for the city somehow change with an increase in demand?" "Did you, the residents, receive a tax refund because the department you were paying for is smaller? Yet the city sits on $22 million." "The reality is, they don't want to spend it on your safety." "So what have you, the residents, really seen as improvements over the last two decades? A dilapidated rec center and fire department that is a third smaller when you pay the same or more." "But the city's, the city news, the, excuse me, the new city center complex will somehow positively impact your day-to-day existence for the better." "In her comments, the mayor tried to draw a comparison to the city by breaking down calls per firefighter, which we have seen as a compare, we have not seen as a comparison in the past." "What she failed to mention in her comparison is that those other cities have 40-hour fire prevention officers and assistant chiefs. They also have multiple officers per shift, which this administration has eliminated." "We are down from six lieutenants to three." "We have not, not only lost a 40-hour prevention officer, but we also lost assistant chief position. It was filled, vacated, and then never filled again." "So comparing the calls also does not account for the non-run-related workload the department has to absorb between calls." "We now only have certain individuals who are assigned to suppression and EMS duties who also have to manage the inspections of all the new construction the mayor has boasted about bringing to the city." "And those tasks taken on by the shift lieutenants has increased due to the lack of the assistant chief and the reduction of command staff from six to three." "Throw in the need to train and special cost savings projects, such as having a firefighter change out of all station lighting rather than hiring an electrician, and our time is plenty accounted for." "Another distinction she tried to make was that not all fire calls are fires." "She is correct. That does not mean that they are not emergencies. Just because it's recorded as a fire run does not mean it was any less important of a run for the person having the problem." "We simply categorize runs as EMS or fire." "The variety of calls we go on is great, is too great to sort out in simple terms." "We have the ability to categorize. It's just as easier to record all non-EMS runs as fire." "Further breakdown to the utility calls, CO leaks, elevator rescues, electrical lines down, and many more." "One statistic is EMS calls that require additional assistance." "There are EMS calls that, due to nature or severity, need more help and account for the majority of our fire runs." "The mayor mentioned that the three firefighters being allowed off per shift is one of the staffing problems." "This is a holdover from when we had 10-person shifts with a seven-person minimum." "This meant there was no scheduling overtime." "The provision was part, in part retained to be a disincentive for the city to reduce staffing." "In reducing staffing, the city has paid more in overtime." "The good and bad is that the city has the money to cover the nearly 300,000 annual overtime budget." "They view this as a cost savings instead of hiring three individuals." "What they do not factor in is the negative impact on the employees and our ability to properly staff our minimum of six per day." "There are days when, due to excessive mandated overtime, there is nobody left eligible to work, or they would be on duty for four straight days." "That's 96 hours." "Is that what you want, showing up for your emergency, someone who may have had very little sleep for four days? On the days that you have only five or even four on duty, with any less than six people, we cannot properly staff two ambulances and provide fire suppression, not to mention the toll this takes on our families." "For the record, we will not offer a reduction to our three-member off." "This administration may look at it as a cause of the problem. We look at it as a necessity for our members' sanity and well-being at this point." "Another useful but debated employee pool is part-time employees." "At one point, the city had 16 part-time firefighters. We now struggle to keep two." "The poor pay is the main reason given. Other cities pay substantially more." "Several were cities the mayor used as examples in her per-call comparison." "The city, through a letter of understanding, is allowed to staff one part-time firefighter per day that counts towards the staffing, the minimum staffing." "A favorite topic of the mayor's is the ability for the paramedics to drop down to EMT basic status after 15 years of continuous service as a paramedic and 15 paramedics below them in seniority." "Her implication is that EMTs have no purpose." "We staff with minimum of three paramedics on per day. With a six-person shift, that means one EMT is assigned to the second ambulance with a medic on many occasions." "It also means that the EMTs are assigned to the fire apparatus, able to respond with the ambulance to assist or as a first responder, render care under an ambulance until an ambulance arrives." "This provision has been modified in the contract and is being phased out." "The mayor also failed to mention that there, the fact that three members who qualify to drop the EMT status have chosen to retain their paramedic certification at no cost to the city." "This benefit was implemented a very long time..."
You're now over by two minutes.
I'm sorry?
You're now over your time by two minutes.
Okay, well, I have like a page to finish. Other people have gotten up here and talked in front of the council and have gone on far more than five minutes, so I'd like to continue. Please. All right, let me find where I was at here. "We also sustain more injuries during EMS calls than fire." "Combine that with the fact that with our dangerously low staffing, all it takes is one injury for our department to be in a tailspin." "The last statistics with this mutually agreed upon and ratified by council clause is that members now spend over 20 years as paramedics before having enough under them to actually reduce their certification." "In the history of the department, there has only been one person that kept their medic certification, rode in front of the ambulance their entire career." "The Brooklyn Police Department was once a premier department that wanted to work, many wanted to work for. That has changed." "In fact, we have two new hires that left in the last year, with the main raising being the ridiculous staffing model and the lack of potential upward advancement." "This has happened only three times in department history, with two being in the last year." "New hires have options these days, not like in the past." "What is the city doing to make this department marketable?" "They even further dissuade new hires by stretching the pay scale out five years when probation is only two. So a non-probationary employee does not reach the top of the pay scale for three more years." "The members of the local 1145 absolutely love serving this community and appreciate the opportunity to do what they love." "We take great pride in our profession and hate to make public remarks like this." "However, we have been, we have reached a tipping point and can no longer remain silent while this administration has the bravado to brag about how great they have done in bringing new business and revenue and then minimize the needs of residents and its employees." "A recent news article about the Hampton Inn fire revealed the lack of our ladder truck response. With six on duty, we cannot staff it." "We were unable, we were able to run it and have three-person ladders with our minimum of seven." "The city has decided your needs changed and no longer need or want that." "On six-person staffing days, we do jump staff the ladder with two people for highway accidents, and we'll send four out to go to other city fires." "Yes, there are things in the contract that benefit employees. This is how you make a position appealable." "This administration sees these benefits as greed." "Remember that bargaining agreements are just that, an agreement." "For everything we get, we give something, and that goes both ways." "The council had to ratify this contract." "Nobody is getting over on the other side, and the topics discussed have been in the contract for decades." "Lastly, the mayor is proud of her accomplishments of not cutting the staffing under her administration wherever she, when she sat back and watched it happen as a council member and president." "Based on this information, it is my opinion, it's clear that Katie Gallagher is not competent to serve as safety director. She should step down. Thank you."
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I was on the parks cleanup on the Saturday, which went quite well. I was with the mayor, Meg Ryan, and Andy Selhertz. We were down in the park cleaning up, which was quite a mess over there. Some of the people on road own, can't pick the houses out, being polite. You do have a garbage can for the city's supplies. Could you throw the trash? Could you throw the trash in there instead of the park behind your house? Also, in the park, what I did notice, some of the, down by the bridge in the lower part of the park, where they have the large pavilions, there's two large electrical conduits run along that bridge. Two of the main, main supports on the one end are missing and it's sagging. And also several of the picnic tables, needless to say, somebody's trying to break them loose from the ground and the straps are broke loose. On television, I'm a motorcyclist, don't ride as much as I used to, but years and years watching advertisements, watching movies and everything else, they pretty much show the wrong way to do things. When you're riding, you should fasten the helmet. When you're riding, you should put on glasses, no matter what, safety goggles of some, some type, or put your visor down. Things hit you. They've hit me in the glasses, they've hit me in the visor, they've hit me in the windshield. So, as TV people aren't doing anything to help, they got a new advertisement out, these, these women riding the scooters overseas, loose helmets, no goggles, no visors, and a little kid on the back. And I was talking to a gentleman on the phone ordering parts at work. We're talking about the supply chain issues. And he said, on the West Coast, he goes, you know, don't expect that to end anytime soon. They're coming up on contract negotiations at this year, at the end of the, end of summer or whatever, and they're not going to get any better. And what I didn't know, and my friends did, or I didn't realize it, I guess there's only one shift working. They tried to get more shifts, and that hasn't happened. And last but not least, the unemployment. The government and the TV, the rate is so low that everybody's working. And everywhere you see, people need employment, people don't want to work, I don't know how much more the government's giving them now. I hope nothing, what has been ridiculous over the last three years. And now they're finally coming through the COVID, well, it might just be the flu. Zingo. And people have been dying from the flu and, yes, COVID.
Anyone else have any comments to make for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn? All right, we'll now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Public Safety and Environmental Committee. Councilwoman Ryan Shuck.
We had a safety and, Public Safety and Environmental Committee meeting last Monday. We had a very lengthy agenda. We talked about the fireworks legislation, which is currently on the books and has been through two readings regarding adding the state law in there, which now allows fireworks to keep Brooklyn's current firework ban in place. So the police chief started out the meeting and gave reservations about allowing fireworks on certain days due to the police work that already goes into responding to these calls and the difficulty about it. He talked about that he believes enforcement could be more difficult if fireworks are allowed on certain days but banned the rest of the year. Additionally, he talked about a situation a couple of years, several years ago, where a little girl had an accident with fireworks and lost a few fingers. Fire Chief Paul echoed the police chief's response and said that he believes it comes down to a safety issue in terms of banning amateur fireworks in Brooklyn. Several firework enthusiasts did come out to the meeting to talk to the committee and council about why they believe fireworks, even on just a few certain days, can be done safely. They talked about that they would like to use fireworks as law-abiding citizens and follow the rules that the city would put in place, including potential permits, timeframes, and days of the year. The committee did recommend to council that the current legislation be adopted as stands, continuing the full ban on fireworks after listening to both the safety chiefs discuss the enforcement issues and safety issues. We did discuss creating an opioid committee regarding the settlement money that the, the city of Brooklyn is getting. Councilwoman Pucci passed out draft language for the committee that was discussed to determine how, this committee would determine how the settlement funds would be used. This draft including, included the following members on the committee: the mayor and, or, sorry, the mayor or designee, fire chief or designee, police chief or their designee, a member of council appointed by council, and a member of the public appointed by council who has either had a personal connection or has been impacted by, by the opioid crisis or who has professional expertise working in the field. There was further discussion on this committee, and we decided to change the "or" for the resident or of the person who has been impacted by this or has professional expertise to an "and" and include both of them in this committee. The person impacted would be a resident, and if we can find a resident who is an expertise in this field, that would be great, or just a member of the community. And after this amendment, we did, the committee did recommend that council adopt this language, which is being introduced on today's agenda. We did discuss the tornado siren. Chief Milky gave some background on the tornado siren. To start this discussion, the first one was put in during the early 2000s by the tennis court. Later, one was added by Summer and Kennedy south of the highway after, on some bad weather days of testing it, they realized that residents with windows closed, better insulation inside their homes couldn't always hear the sirens go off. Even when working, the sirens did have mechanical problems, and the vendor did have to come out often to fix these sirens. Two residents did speak up in support of the sirens at this committee meeting. Further discussion was made by both the committee and council members that were present at this meeting. A couple of members requested that Chief Milky reach out and get an accurate quote for the sirens, because it's been several years since we got a quote from the company. And I had asked if we could reach out to the county to see if there was any regional plan on, you know, tornado sirens, or if the county just plans to use Ready Notify. And finally, on our agenda was preliminary discussions regarding speed cameras along the I-480 corridor passing throughout Brooklyn. This was mainly brought up because of the motorcycles and dirt bikes. Sheets is a meetup spot, and our officers do work hard at preventing, as they're able to when they find out that the large, sometimes very large group of people meet at, meet at sheets and try to do what they can to prevent the speeding before it starts. But it, it's a big safety concern. The police chief did mention that it's a safety concern not just for the riders, but others on the road, as well as our officers who, to get up to the speeds of over 80 and sometimes like even, sometimes even over 100 miles per hour. He did bring up that some of the motorcycles and dirt bikes, which would be the, you know, the main reason really starting this discussion, don't have plates or sometimes have technology to hide their plates when they choose. But he did say that he believes after Mayfield Village put them in along I-271 this past December, you know, they, some people will slow down and it should help with the problem. One resident did ask if putting in speed cameras along 480 would lead to cameras being placed on residential roads or street, city streets, and the mayor responded that that is not the intent of this discussion. Again, it was just a preliminary discussion on this issue, and that ends my very lengthy report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Shuck. Next on this recreation board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Next recreation board meeting will be held on May 16th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. That concludes our report.
Thank you. The committee, the whole met this evening at 6:15 prior to the start of the council meeting to discuss the following. Resolution 2022-13, the committee recommended council adopt the Caihoga Greenways Vision Plan, providing for the periodic review thereof and providing for the integration of the plan with the physical development of the community. Council also, or, excuse me, the committee also recommended that council adopt Resolution 22-14, and this is not in the Greater Cleveland Trails and Bike Ways Wayfinding Sign System. Both of these have been discussed at previous council meetings. Council, the committee also recommend council adopt Resolution 2022-15. This authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with Ridge Road Transfer Station for the disposable of the city's solid waste, as well as authorizing the community cost share agreement by between the Sewer District and the city of Brooklyn, which is Resolution 2022-16. Ordinance 2022-11, this is the ordinance that Ms. Ryan Shuck was just talking about reaffirming the prohibition of the possession, discharge, ignition, or explosion of fireworks. There is mixed reactions to this piece of legislation right now on council. Seemingly, it looks like council wants to fall somewhere in the middle. And so I made the recommendation that we table this legislation to our next meeting so that we can draft a compromise ordinance that will be presented at the next meeting. So a vote will not be taken on this tonight, it will be tabled. Our new business this evening is Resolution 22, 2022-19 and 2022-20. These are both on first reading. These are our moratoriums. The first one is on the construction of self-storage facilities. The second one is on the construction of billboards. We've talked about this before. This, both of these will be dealt with in the zoning update, and so we're placing a moratorium on those right now until that update is complete. Next is Resolution 2022-21, and this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a modified joint improvement agreement among Brooklyn, Brooklyn Heights, Cleveland, and Parma, and this is for the resurfacing of Brook Park Road. This project will not take place until next year, but this gets the ball rolling in that joint agreement. With that, we had a brief discussion regarding that. Brooklyn will have to contribute 18.5% of the engineering costs for it, but we will be reimbursed at a later time down the road. And again, this is not going to take place till next year. The mayor indicated that all these communities are in agreement with this, and so this will be a much-needed improvement to that Brook Park Road corridor, going through not only our city, but those other cities as well. Resolution 2022-22, this is the legislation, again, that Mrs. Ryan Shuck discussed, that creates an opioid settlement advisory task force, and that will, they will be the ones that decide on how we use those funds, once they do become available, once the litigation is complete. And then lastly, on first reading, and we hope to pass by suspension rules, this amends the Section 149.02 of our ordinances, which are the national holidays recognized in the country. Last year, Juneteenth was added as a national holiday, and so in keeping with our ordinances, this will add that holiday to the city's ordinances, or, excuse me, the city's holidays as well. We also did meet briefly in executive discussion, executive session to discuss a matter of personnel. All these meetings are open to the public. They take place at 6:15 prior to the start of all council meetings. Are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with our planning commission. Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. Planning commission met on Wednesday, May 4th to consider two items. The first was a request from Archer Sign Corporation for internally lit walls, wall signs for firehouse subs at 4748 Ridge Road, and that was approved. The second was a request from, from Schram for a sign package for Crumble at 7323 Northcliff Avenue. The, part of the package was approved and part of it will have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. The next meeting will be June 8th at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting does meet on May the 19th to discuss the following: A request from Mary Vincent for a variance, a five-foot, two-inch to the minimum of 10-foot from the side lot lines for a swimming pool at 6404 DeLora. The other two have to do with what Mrs. Groddick just said, a request from Schram Signs for additional internally limited wall sign to the allowable of one for Crumble at 7323 Northcliff, and also a request from Schram Signs for additional 140 square foot of window graphic signs to cover stockroom windows for Crumble again at 7323 Northcliff. Again, that takes place at 6:00 PM on May the 19th. We'll now move on to our school board liaison. Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I attended the school board meeting on Tuesday, April 26th in Room 173. It was a lengthy agenda. For the students, spotlight, they recognized the power of the Penn Regional and State Qualifiers. The seventh grade regional qualifiers were Grace Paul, Aiden Nguyen, and Gracie White. The eighth grade regional qualifiers were Malak Chopsek, Luca Zuvik, and Maya Lee. Seventh grade state qualifier, Grace Paul, and eighth grade state qualifier, Malak Chopsek. They also recognized the honor roll and merit roll and athletic honors for the third quarter. They entered into a service agreement for the upcoming school year, actually for the next two school years with school health services. And they approved the Hurricane Alley paving project. They accepted that bid. They passed a resolution listing the students as having completed the requirements for graduation for this year. They approved adult chaperone and volunteers for two overnight field trips, one to Washington, DC, and the other to Greenfield Village. They had various resolutions for continuing contracts, limited contracts for staff, tutors, approving parental leave, a long-term substitute, some unpaid leave of absence, the hiring of certified staff for summer enrichment and professional developments, and supplemental coaching, resignations, and assignments done for the upcoming school year, employment of classified staff, some resignations, some substitutes. They approved the staff who will be providing the summer cleaning of the buildings and summer food service. There was a retirement, including a commendation, and an administrative contract for the Director of Teacher and Learning. They also adopted the amounts for the tax rate to be sent to the County Budget Commission. They transferred $399,000 from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund, and that's for resurfacing of the track at the stadium. And they entered into a three-year agreement with WOW for phone and internet service. There was a work session on May 3rd that I was not able to attend. They had a discussion of the levy cycle, which I've reported on this now for several meetings, that they have had several discussions on this, and also a review of the five-year forecast. There was also a resolution to support the addition of parental right-to-know plank to the 2022 OSBA legislative platform, and this also has been discussed at other meetings that I have attended. And really, Brooklyn is already providing access to this information. For anyone familiar with PTA and the state conventions, this is very similar. Resolutions are proposed and then accepted, and then at the state convention, or in this case, it would be the OSBA, which is Ohio School Boards Association. At their delegate assembly, there is then debate and a vote on this resolution. If adopted, it directs and guides the OSBA in positions they take and in policies that they established. Also, if adopted, it means that any Brooklyn board member who's a delegate to the assembly is bound to actively support this. And I believe we're all going to actually get a copy of this, because it does stipulate that it will be submitted to all local, state, and federal elected officials representing Brooklyn. And that'll be up for a vote at the next meeting, which is Tuesday, May 17th. There is a time change for that meeting. It will be at 5:00 PM in Room 173. They're meeting earlier because that is also the senior awards night. This Saturday, May 14th, is the Bike Rodeo and Touch a Truck. It's from 9:00 to 11:00, and it's in the blue and white lots. You will be able to park in the gold lot, which is the one on Bit Off. Families can pre-register to skip the registration lines, and if you are pre-registering, it gets your family into the event more quickly, and it also gives each family an extra ticket for the prizes and raffles. There is information in a flyer on the school website. Bring your bicycle and helmet to the skills course, and you can see different safety vehicles. Say hello to some of our safety forces from Brooklyn. There'll be a DJ there, kindergarten registration information, Safety Town information. You can enter a raffle to win a bike. The raffle is held after the event. There are prizes, giveaways, and much more. It is a free event. For more information, contact Laura Paul at 216-485-8176. And there is a rain date of May 21st, and it would be the same time from 9:00 to 11:00. And that completes my school report. Thank you.
We'll now move on to reports of council. We begin this evening with...
Thank you. I would like to take just a few more minutes to discuss the idea of installing new sirens in our city. Before Tuesday evening, I didn't have a strong opinion either way, but if you recall,
Before Tuesday evening, I didn't have a strong opinion either way, but if you recall, last Tuesday evening, we had several storms passing through our area. I was eating dinner when the first alerts started in my house, and those were on my television. That was about the tornado watch. Then my cell phone started notifying me, and then my Alexa started notifying me, and then I got the code red text to my land, text and to my landline. Then all of those notifications were repeated for the severe thunderstorm warning. And that made me realize a point that we hadn't discussed yet. Sirens are just sound. All of those other notifications gave me information that I needed. I knew what the warning was. The first one was for a tornado watch. The second one was for a thunderstorm warning. I knew when it was starting. I knew where the storms were located currently. I knew when the alerts were going to end. All of those things, that's information that we all need, that a siren cannot provide us as residents. Two of those alerts are free of charge. The code red alerts and the television alerts are accessible to all of us. Other alerts are easily accessible, especially if you have a smartphone or a tablet, which many of us have. So I think we really should be spending our time and city money on making sure that residents have all of the information, more than just a siren can give us. I'd also just like to take a moment of indulgence to thank Ridge Park Square for their sponsorship. Many of you know that I am a second grade teacher at Brooklyn School. Well, Ridge Park Square has been sponsoring yearly since 2017 our program, One School, One Book, which this year is One School, One Author. They purchase a book for every child, kindergarten through seventh grade, in the hopes that the children will be taking these books home to read with their families. Several stores at Ridge Park Square also help us with our community scavenger hunt. So during the month of May, our students are given a little clue for one of the locations at Ridge Park Square, and they go with their scavenger hunt paper and get a stamp, and a little recognition for participating in the scavenger hunt. So this is a wonderful community school project, and I'm so happy that Ridge Park Square is, again, funding it for us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. I first want to thank our, you know, regular attendee, Victoria Arvido, as well as who we mentioned, Councilwoman Salchardt, and the mayor, for coming up to the Big Creeks Connect cleanup. This cleanup, the Big Creeks Connect one specifically, I believe they're on year 27, if I remember correctly, and the last two years with the COVID outbreak, they felt it was best to not do it. So this was the first year back, and it was a lot of fun. We got to go into the creek and really pick up the trash that the sewer people would be proud we were picking up. And the Big Creek Connect cleanup does kick off our general season of cleanups around Brooklyn. And so our next one is Sunday, May 22nd, at nine, we'll be meeting at 9:00 o'clock in the morning at Fifth Third Bank at Bedelfand Tiedemann. And I did want to bring up two articles that I saw recently. The first is from the Center for Community Solutions, and they discuss the population changes in Cleveland's inner suburbs, which Brooklyn is part of. And between the 2010 and 2020 census, Brooklyn saw over 20% increase in residents who are aged 65 and older. So what this is telling them, and this was consistent, except for Brooklyn Heights, for all inner ring suburbs, is that seniors want to age in place. So why I'm bringing this up is because Brooklyn's grant this year for residents is an aging-in-place grant, and I think it was a great time to do this grant. And because of the research that the Senator for Community Solutions, I think part of the reason with that research and showing the amount of seniors who want to age in place, the county, as well as the Western Reserve Area Office, are doing an assessment to explore how communities have adapted to the changing demographics and what additional resources are needed. So that's the first article. And the second one I wanted to bring up to residents' attention was on the front page of The Plain Dealer today. And as we've discussed, the opioid lawsuit and setting up the settlement fund and setting up a committee on how to really spend these funds, there was information about this new synthetic opioid that is making its presence in Cuyahoga County, according to experts. And so, you know, the opioid crisis is here. In addition to regular opioids, there is this new synthetic one that from, I believe, the end of 2020, there were only two deaths, and then across the county in 2021, there were, I believe, 60-some deaths throughout the county. So I do just want to put a resource out there. If you or someone you know is ready for treatment, please call 216-623-6888, which is a 24-hour crisis and referral hotline. And that ends my report.
Mr. Salchardt.
Can you give a thank you to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts troops that showed up?
Oh, sorry. Yes, the Boy Scouts, thank you for coming out every year, and Girl Scouts this year as well, to the cleanup. They always make a presence at the Big Creek Connect cleanup, and they have made a presence at our other cleanups throughout the summer as well. But they stuck with the Kingdom area and cleaning up, and I know they do it on a regular basis as well. So thank you for that reminder, but thank you so much to them.
Mr. Salchardt.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Thank you to Mr. Wisniewskis, mentioning the fruit, fresh fruit and produce giveaways. Next one is Tuesday, May 24th, starts at 3:30. Please do not get there too early. The truck actually delivering all the stuff, they show up till, pretty close to the beginning of the start. So just try to get everybody taken care of as soon as possible, so we don't have too many lines. In regards to the residents with adjoining backyards on Summer and Kennedy Lane, out of the 32 residents that we've contacted and delivered the surveys to, we have a total of six. So it appears that there is not much interest at all from the neighborhood. Some residents have taken it upon themselves to work out solutions. We've tried this for three times, so as of now, since we can't get consensus of all the people in that affected area, the matter's going to be put to rest for now, and that's the end of that matter. In regards to Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, as Meg mentioned, if you want to look for volunteer opportunities, they're at volunteer.kab.org. When you look in for a radius of five miles, you'll find a number of dates. We have all of them in there. And to end up on a good note, Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, the city and Brooklyn schools will be working together on May 31st in a variety of spots across the city. We have about 250-plus students working on a community service day. Students are going to be working at the Brooklyn Senior Center, the Cuyahoga County Library, the Historical Society, Brooklyn Point, and the school itself, at various locations in Brooklyn Acres, and also cleaning up along Tiedemann from Bit Off to Brook Park Road. So it's going to be a good thing, a good day. Hopefully, the weather helps us too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Thank you to all who spoke. And Mr. Wisniewskis, unfortunately, I don't get back into Brooklyn from work until after 5:00, so it's just a little bit too early. My schedule changed a little bit this year, and I was hoping, you know, that I would be back in Brooklyn in order to help with the Bada's Yard, but unfortunately, I'm not back from work yet. So it's been a very busy couple of weeks. I participated in the zoning code review meeting, which was on April 28th. It was a big meeting. We reviewed where we are in the process and also some updates. And again, I'm going to stress that nothing is final. This is still definitely work in progress. We did discuss the areas that were under discussion for a possible change, specifically Manoa and Ridge, and for now, there's a consensus to leave it as it is. From a zoning perspective, it definitely made sense to at least consider this, especially for Manoa. I know Mr. Rowland did reach out to some experts, and as with most hypotheticals, there really are two different ways to look at it. He sought information from the Board of Realtors and also from a mortgage officer. The Realtor had stated that for non-conforming use, that they didn't see any impact today. However, they did mention that if down the line, if it was a situation where a developer did purchase most of the homes and one or two were left, that there actually could be a negative impact to those property owners. The mortgage officer stated that with the appraisals, they look at the highest and best use, so they didn't really see an issue at this point. However, there would be no way to predict that there wouldn't be a negative impact in the future. For anyone who is interested, all of this information is available on the website. I also attended the Safety Committee meeting, which was on May 2nd, and I'd like to thank the committee for their support and recommendation for Resolution 2022-22, which establishes the Advisory Committee for the expenditure of the opioid funds that we anticipate receiving. Regarding the sirens, from the beginning, I did have mixed feelings on this, and I did believe that it was important for us to get the facts as far as how much it would actually cost to repair these, instead of dealing with a hypothetical. And we do have one estimate, but we are waiting for a couple more. In the meantime, I did reach out to the county, and I'll just share what their response was. And this is from the planning manager from the Cuyahoga County Office of Emergency Management. And what he shared was sirens are quickly becoming the least effective way to notify of emergency situations in suburban areas due to soundproofing on cars and buildings. They also don't communicate what the hazard is. That is why the National Weather Service will broadcast many severe weather warnings via the Wireless Emergency Alerts, and there's an acronym for that, it's WEA, to every cell phone in the warning area. They also broadcast over the Emergency Alerts system on radio, weather radios, and broadcast TV. There is legislation at the federal level to require TV streaming and satellite radio services to also broadcast emergency alert system notifications to people streaming within the alert area. The only weather-related warnings that are sent via Ready Notify/Code Red and not via WEA are severe thunderstorm warnings and winter storm warnings, as they are not usually on their own an immediate threat to life. Wireless Emergency Alerts is an opt-out system. This is the same system that people receive Amber Alerts on their phone. Many curiers allow you to opt out of the different types of WEA messages that may be sent. The National Weather Service issues WEAs for the hazards listed below as they are considered life-threatening. Tornado warning, flash flood warning, extreme wind warning, hurricane warning, tsunami warning, typhoon warning, and dust storm warning. For cell phones without GPS or GPS disabled, any phone connected to a tower that covers the warning area will be alerted. For people who have a cell phone with GPS enabled, newer phones will determine if it is within the warning area and only display the message if it is. For information on wireless emergency alerts from the National Weather Service, please visit www.wether.gov. And I did go to that website. There was a lot of very good information, and there's also a lot of very good information on this at the FEMA website. Another thought I had also is, I think, as a community, we could do a little bit better in making residents aware of this. For example, I believe it was in March, Ohio had, I went back and looked, I didn't realize it at the time, but Ohio had the Severe Weather Awareness Week. I know that in our schools, we have drills and, you know, tornado drills and everything. I know, I agree with what Ms. Grodick said, that, you know, the siren, you know, on the off chance that somebody's outside and they hear it, they still don't know what the situation is. I know one of the discussions we had when the siren was put in was what if there was a hazmat situation with a train derailment for all the residents back in the Idlewood area? And basically, what they should do is close all their doors and windows and stay inside with everything closed until they get more information on what to do. And I know that our fire department had worked on a plan, if that should ever happen. But, you know, last week, I also experienced what Mrs. Grodick mentioned, that it was on, I had, I happened to have the radio on, the television was on in the other room, my phones. You know, once it became a tornado warning, of course, regular programming was preempted. One of the things that, one of the chiefs, that Chief Milky had contacted, mentioned that he believed that we would be better off spending that money on the weather radios. And I think this is something that we should at least look at. I think there are some people that don't have cell phones. You know, I think, you know, like I said, we've got TV, radio, but, you know, I think it's worth looking at. You know, if we purchase 100, we usually get a grant from Walmart, very similar to what we do with our smoke detectors, have them at the senior center, and just see if we have a need for them. Also, I would like Ms. Ryan Shaki, if you could call a Safety Committee meeting so that we can take an in-depth look at the staffing situation within the fire department. I'd appreciate us taking a look at that. And finally, I have some good news to share. April 29th, Cleveland State was finally able to have their Certified Public Manager Program graduation. They had rescheduled this numerous times. They were determined to be able to do it in person. In fact, it was delayed so many times that there were actually two cohorts included. And we had some very good publicity for the city of Brooklyn. I brought this, the project I did, We Think Recycle, Recycle Right Brooklyn, was chosen as the best project, and this was something that was chosen, not by the faculty or the administration, but it was chosen by the other students in the class. We really had some incredible projects, so I was actually kind of surprised that mine was selected. And what I didn't know until that day was that this is the first time they decided to give this award, that the caliber of the projects was so high that they had the idea, you know, we should start recognizing the projects. So that was really a nice publicity for the city of Brooklyn, and then this is something that is also continuing in the ongoing cohorts. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bralski.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to say, hopefully, all the mothers of Brooklyn had a wonderful Mother's Day. It was my wife's first Mother's Day as a mother, and I'm hoping I did everything I was supposed to. I'd like to also thank John for coming and speaking about the fresh produce distributions that occur at St. Elias on the fourth Tuesday of every month. I know I enjoy working at it, and I enjoy working with Ms. Shaki and Andy, you know, doing that. I think it's a great opportunity to give back to the city. Speaking of the city, I did speak with some residents from the Acres about the letter that was sent to them about the Aging in Place Grant. A few of the letters have been sent to the Brooklyn Acres. Unfortunately, it was not caught and should have been, should not have been sent. So I know that they're disappointed. They were disappointed that they had received them, and I'm sure that in the future that we will, as a city, work to address that so that doesn't happen again. When it comes to a few of the talking points of the evening, when it comes to the speed cameras, I'm just not too sure of the overall success that they'll truly have in reducing the speeding on 480. As Ms. Shaki said in the safety meeting, Chief Milky spoke of face plates and other technology that they can use to block their license plates. So, and at the speed that they go, I just don't feel as though they're going to speed if they want to. I just don't think that, at the moment, that the cameras are appropriate, that that would handle the situation. When it comes to the emergency sirens, I want to reiterate what I had said at the safety meeting this past Monday. I believe that the city should get quotes on the cost of repairs, and as Ms. Pucci said, we are starting to get some quotes. said, we are starting to get some quotes, so we'll take a look at that. And I'm also very interested in the personal storm radios that the chief brought up, since he even had another chief telling him that the reality is that they may be a better bang for the buck. And I'm definitely interested in hearing what the council's opinions are on sirens and the radios. And lastly, when it comes to ordinance 2022-11, the fireworks legislation, I, you know, from the very beginning, since early conversations, I had stated where I stood on fireworks. I believe that the residents of the city, especially from the posts on social media, are intelligent and respectful enough to properly handle and use the state-approved fireworks. So I appreciate the fact that Council President Van Kirk asked us if it was okay to table it for another conversation, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I wasn't be able to attend the Safety Meeting, but I have some comments on three of the subjects that were mentioned. As far as the sirens, I believe we had estimates come in around $50,000, which I notice is a enormous amount. City does not have an emergency alert, the city does have an emergency alert notification system. However, there has been only, a little more than 1,000 people have signed up for the Code Red. I believe we shouldn't put any price tag when it comes to safety of our residents. You should have more talks and a cyber notification system. Talked about the phones, what if the phones are not charged? That is another situation. Now the phones are down. If they don't have their TVs on, there's no way from the alert them on that end. So that's stuff to take in consideration. Fireworks. When it was illegal in our state to blow off fireworks, people did it anyway, at all hours of the day and night. Our own ordinance didn't stop it, and I believe the police department was overwhelmed at times. We should come to a middle ground in this issue since it hasn't worked with our current ordinance, and now our state has made it legal. I believe a good starting point would be to limit the hours of operation and possible permits for handling of fireworks within our city. I would ask council, put this ordinance tabled, which I know is already in the works, so I won't go any further on that. Speeding cameras. In my opinion, these are nothing but a money grab. Cleveland is a good example of what happened when they attempted to use speed cameras in certain areas throughout the city. And it got to the point, they were everywhere. It ended up that the residents finally petitioned it on the ballot and overwhelmingly voted them all out. I myself have received numerous complaints with those Lyndale cameras, so I oppose anything that has to do to put up with any camera anywhere because it is never limited to one area. It'll start to go everywhere. As soon as we find out we can make money at one end, we will spread it through the city. The only place that I know these cameras are active right now is the school zones in Parma. Lyndale has one. In Newburgh Heights, I think they have a couple of them running down Harbor. They mentioned they were on 271. I drive up 271 on my job constantly, I have yet to see those cameras, but now I'm going to pay more attention to them. Are they mobile? Are they on the poles? I don't know. All the other cities that I know of, the ones that I mentioned, have taken those cameras down. So unless there's some cities that I haven't seen, I travel 150 miles, 200 miles a day, and I'm in every city and every county all day long. So I don't see the amount of these cameras that they're seeing, they're putting up in some areas, 271 being one of them, and I, I'm going to pay more attention as I go north and south on 271. But I oppose any kind of speed cameras in our city, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. I also want to wish Happy Mother's Day to all the moms in Brooklyn. I trust that yesterday was a good day. And Mr. Brasky, to answer your question, your wife is here today, so you must have heard, she's smiling back there. So it's Happy Mother's Day to all the first-time moms and the longtime moms. Hope you had a blessed day yesterday. In regards to the fireworks, I said this before, I think there's some middle ground here. The way that I kind of approach it is, as Mr. Tansky just said, people who are going to break the law are going to break the law no matter what the law is. So to me, completely abetting them is only punishing people who would follow the law and want to do, want to use them on certain days and times. So that's kind of the common sense approach I take to it. They've been outlawed in the state for as long as I've lived in Ohio, and I've lived here since 2001. And so now that the law has changed, I think it would be good for us, for responsible residents, to be able to use them in a responsible manner, and so that will be the, the goal of this legislation. So there's always some good middle ground on both sides, and I think that we can come to that in short order here. And then lastly, lastly, Mr. Changary passed away several years ago, but around this time, he would always get up and speak about summertime being around the corner and kids being out. I know that the baseball here in Brooklyn started already, the practices have at least, a lot of kids running around, so please be careful as you're out and about. I think the winter weather is gone, I don't want to, don't want to jinx it, but I think it's finally gone, and so a lot of people are out and about. So please be careful as you're driving up and down the streets of Brooklyn. It's good to see people out and about. And that's all I have for tonight, so I will pass it on to Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. A few things, Meg touched about the Aging in Place Grant, so did Erin. Great program, put together with the $50,000 Community Development Supplemental Grant. This is really to look at our stats currently, what's going on in Brooklyn, and allow seniors to age in place and use those small changes in their home for they, they're more comfortable. I know that the fire chief could talk to this, but, you know, one of the issues that we, we called, we had called out to on EMS are falls. And it's just those little things that we can change and help them change in their house with even small improvements to help them so they don't fall over the grab bars or the, the lever doors or the remote ceiling fans. So those little small things to make their lives easier so they can continue to age in place with dignity. And that's what they want to do, so embrace that. Two things about that. One, we did a grant presentation to help seniors understand what the Aging in Place Grant is, a little bit of information. Those came out because they are going to have a program that helps us get it for low cost on some of these items, as well as warranty and install certain things. And it's a really good partnership that they were starting off, and we can work with one of our retailers to kick that off. So presentation was done on May 4th at 10:00 AM. This presentation was taped, and it will be available on YouTube hopefully this week. But there's also a second presentation Friday, May 20th at 11:00 AM at the Senior Center. Also, Erin, you mentioned letters going out to Acres. So I, my building department did tell me about this. With the applying for CDSG grant, you apply for these grants and you don't know if you're going to get the funding, and it's such a jammed period of time. So we knew we were going to be able to get something out on Facebook if we received the grant. We knew that we would be able to get something off the newsletter, but the, the time lapse on the newsletter is so great, and the time period to get the money out is so quick. So they took the senior centers list, they took the rec center list of all seniors, and they sent out letters. Clearly, you know, there was probably a few letters in there that shouldn't have been in there, but qualifications is you must be the owner's primary residence, you must be a homeowner, you must be up on your property taxes and the city taxes. Over 65 needs to be eligible. And extra points are given to veterans as well as those who are under the 300% poverty level. So all this was outlined in the letter. This will go into the city's newsletter, which should come out in a couple weeks as well. But again, this is a tight time period, and, but it's a terrific grant, so if you have, you know, somebody that would be interested, tell them to come out to the Friday, May 20th session at the Senior Center at 11:00, or watch the YouTube video. That should be up again this week. Again, we still are in the Heritage Home Program, and you get the little postcards in the mail. This is a great program if you are looking to make improvements in your house and you're really not sure what to do, you could call it a contractor. They also have a lot of YouTube videos or videos on their website. If you are looking to do improvements on your house, small improvements, you don't know what to do, it's a good place to start. So I encourage you to go check that out. It's heritagehomeprogram.org, or you could call them and tell them what you're trying to do, and they can help you. Their phone number is 216-469, or I'm sorry, 426-3116. It's 216-426-3116, heritagehomeprogram.org. Again, a great resource, the, the city pays a small nominal amount to participate in this, so our residents, and we've seen some return. They have low interest rates on loans if you're looking to do larger projects as well. Also, surveys went out to homes. We did, last did this in 2016 or 17, and this is a good way to get feedback from residents on where we're doing, what, what areas we're doing well on, what areas we need to improve. If you weren't one of the homes that received that, that survey, you are able to do that online now. They put that on social media recently, it's also on our city's website, so I encourage you, if you want to participate in that survey, to check that out. Also, construction begins this week at Rabbit Run, Westbrook, Boxwood, and Ivywood. And so that area, we tend to clump areas of construction together, so I, I know that's going to be a headache for those residents, and I know that there's a water issue on Dong Cliff right now, so that they're repairing those backups. So it's difficult to get in and out of that area. Just think, oh, it's going to be really nice once it's all done and all paid, and we won't have to go back to that area again for a while. Also, some bad news, just received word today that the Memphis Bridge is going to be closed permanently both ways. They were doing work there today, and, actually, last week, and they saw some things that, when they were doing improvements, that kind of alarmed them. They brought out their different engineers to take a look at it, they dug a little bit more, they found areas today that made them decide that they were going to shut down the bridge. It is going to create a lot of headaches with the Amazon project going on right now, and we're going to have to work out some internal things with safety forces. Again, I don't know how long this is going to be. The county public works director did say that, you know, even though that the contractor is under contract to complete it a certain date, that doesn't mandate that the contractor do it any faster, but they are willing to put some more funding in to allow this work to get done quicker so we can open up the bridge. And then Kevin, I know you talked about cameras, I, you weren't at the Safety Meeting, so I just wanted to elaborate a little on the conversation with cameras. This is not a money grab. I, the city care less about the revenue with cameras, but we do receive a lot of phone calls about speeding on 480. It's constant, it's a comment that we've gotten over and over again. And there's, and I agree, this, I don't think it's going to be the ultimate solution. It is not safe for our police to be traveling at that high rate of speed trying to chase these motorcycles down, but something needs to stop. If, if it is, it's just a trial period to see if it's even worth to try to speed an area down. But again, I've reiterated multiple times, this is, this is not a revenue grab. And one area that did turn on their cameras recently with the new mayor's Parma Heights, so if you're driving around, be careful of that area on Snow Road. I did talk to the mayor and ask if she had any feedback from residents on those cameras being turned on, and she said no, actually, she got more calls about fireworks than anything else. So it is a hot topic right now. As far as sirens, I, I know we've talked about this a lot, and from my position, whatever city council wants to do is, is completely fine with me. At the end of the day, people need to understand that this sirens are just one thing of many things that, that can be helpful. And, you know, talking multiple, our safety forces here and the chiefs, you know, they believe it's antiquated technology, this is something that, you know, was useful a long time ago. The last time FEMA has updated the report on tornado sirens is 2006, that's nearly 20 years ago. And even then, in 2006, they talked about the fact that as energy improvements happen in buildings, insulation becomes better, people can't hear them in the buildings, they can't hear them in their cars. They're not effective when there's ambient noise, meaning that, that tornado siren by the highway is probably not the most effective place to put it. I don't know how they decided where the, the tornado sirens were going. Their service costs, which are fine with that. And then the one thing that the county EMA had mentioned, I sent this out to council, is really the truly most effective place for these sirens is if you're outdoors and you have no phone with you. So if you're in the parks or the playgrounds, and so I think of my own children, and of course, that, that ultimate safety risk of being in Brooklyn and you hear the sirens, you know something's going on, great. Clearly, you know, I'm a person who has a cellphone, but say they're out at a sports field. But then you think about, let's compare this. So I'm in recreation programs here in Brooklyn, and my game is in a different city, and wouldn't, you know, and I'm playing, my kid's playing on a soccer field somewhere else. If I'm in North Wilton, Olmsted Falls, Shaker Heights, Brea, Strongsville, Mayfield Heights, Parma, Parma Heights, Brooklyn Heights, the Metro Parks, Fairview Park, Beechwood, Olmsted Township, Bay Village, Middleburg Heights, Broadview Heights, in South Euclid, I'd be in the same position because none of those communities have sirens. So it's good for, you know, if, in that scenario, outdoors, I'm in Brooklyn, and that's when it works. That's when it will alert me that something is going on. So again, I will support whatever city council wants to do on this matter, but people need to recognize this is one solution, one little element, and it has to look at the big picture. We have to educate ourselves on what happens if a tornado siren goes off and I am in the park. What do I do? Do I run to my car? Do I get in a ditch? And so those are the things that we need to talk about and, with people and educate them then. But you also have to take a little bit of accountability and educate yourselves too, because the government can only do so much as well. And that is it. I am not going to touch on the Fire Association Post today. After talking to legal counsel about that, the recommendation was not to discuss that from my viewpoint tonight, and so I'm going to take that recommendation, but I would like to address some things in the near future, so I guess stay tuned for that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one director's report this evening, that is our Fire Chief, Tuk Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I just wanted to clarify some of the information from, from the locals' post. I, I just want folks to realize that the stats that the mayor, that was brought up in, in the post, those were stats that, that I gave the mayor. Those are bits of information that the fire chiefs put together annually, and, and I basically just took, took that annual stat and, and I passed it on to the mayor. And it compares apples to apples throughout the cities for shift personnel only. It didn't take into consideration chiefs and chief officers. So that was information that I gave to the mayor. As far as the LED light conversion that was discussed in there, that is something that we've been working on for, this is the, the third year. We've, we've completed the last two years. This was a project I thought that, within the fire department, that we could handle. We have some very mechanically-inclined individuals, and they've taken the bull by the horn, and, and they've taken a lot of pride in doing that. That was something that I had asked them to do. It wasn't, wasn't from the mayor, it wasn't from the finance director. And I, like I said, we're going to finish up on Phase 3 this year. So as far as the part-timers, I, I've recently discussed with the mayor the hourly rate for part-timers. That's certainly one bit of, of an issue. The other issue is, is that there is a significantly high supply, I'm sorry, a high supply, a high demand and a low supply of, of part-time firefighters out there right now. It, it, it's difficult, we're competing with other part-time departments that strictly are part-time departments, and maybe the chief is full-time. There's another town nearby who, they're all part-time firefighters. And most of the firefighters that work at, at these two locations that I'm speaking of, they're full-time firefighters from somewhere else. So the unfortunate part for us is that because of that, a lot of times, the firefighters we have as part-timers, we're like the farm club for fire departments around here. A lot of our part-timers, if they don't come to us, they end up going to other departments. So it's very, very difficult right now to retain part-timers, just because of that, that high demand and low supply right now. As far as, is the 96 hours that were discussed of somebody working consecutively, I have to tell you, last year, we were bombarded with COVID within the department, okay? We can't work from home, police and fire. We got hit really, really hard, and it was very, very difficult to maintain the six-man minimum, and we did our best. And I want you guys to all know that. It was very, very difficult. Numerous, numerous firefighters with COVID at the same time. So it was a difficult process to get through, okay? My hope is it's an anomaly, all right? I think we'll have COVID for a long, long time, but we really got beat up in 2021 compared to 2020. So it was difficult. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Paul. When I move on legislation, the first item we have this evening is Resolution 2022-13, up for a third reading and adoption, adopting the Kahua Greenways Vision Plan, providing for the periodic review thereof and providing for the integration of the plan with the physical development of the community. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Second. To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-14 is up for a third reading and adoption, adopting the Greater Cleveland Trails and Bike Ways Wayfinding Sign System, providing for the periodic updates and enhancements thereof and providing for the integration and use of these signs standards as appropriate throughout the community. Just no comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-15, up for third reading and adoption, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to enter into a contract with the city of Cleveland for the use of the Ridge Road Transfer Station for the disposal of solid waste. Any comments or questions? Move to approve.
Circle.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-16, authorizing a community cost share agreement binding between the Northeast Ohio Regional Studio District and the city of Brooklyn. Comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Second. To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-11, reaffirming the prohibition of the possession, discharge, ignition, ignition, excuse me, or explosion of fireworks in the city of Brooklyn as set forth in Chapter 1519 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances, notwithstanding the provisions of House Bill 172, is signed into law. I will make a motion that we table this ordinance.
Circle.
To table this ordinance, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
The next items are on first reading. Resolution 2022-19, extending a moratorium imposed by resolutions 2022-10, 2021-13, and 2021-37 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or exchange of use that would enable the construction of storage units or self-service storage facilities for a period of not to exceed 180 days from the effective date of resolution and declaring emergency. Resolution 2022-20, extending a moratorium imposed by resolutions 2022-13, 2021-14, and 2021-40 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, of change of use that would enable the construction of billboards for a period not to exceed 180 days from the effective date of resolution and declaring emergency. Resolution 2022-21 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspending the rules. Authorizing the mayor to enter into the modified joint improvement agreement among the municipalities of Brooklyn, Brooklyn Heights, Cleveland, and Parma for the res servicing of Brook Park Road.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
To adopt, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
On first reading, Resolution 2022-22, creating the opioid settlement advisory task force to provide guidance on appropriate uses of settlement proceeds from the national opioid litigation. And then lastly, ordinance 2022-14 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspending the rules, amending Section 149.02 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances to recognize the Juneteenth National Independence Day holiday and declaring emergency.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Circle.
To suspend the rules, Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.